We're going to go on and start. Neil will be here in a minute, so we'll have our footpad. There's some stuff I'm still going to read to you, all the legalese. Tonight's work session with Kensington Secret Living is an opportunity for the Design Review Board members and applicants to discuss and suggest revisions to a set of proposed plans. Unlike the full DRB meetings, it is an informational meeting that allows everyone to roll up their sleeves and work together on ideas. I don't have sleeves tonight. The Design Review Board does not render any decisions in these sessions, therefore no minutes are taken. Advocate does provide notice to the adjacent property owners, so that's why we're all here. And affected parties, so the work sessions are held as an open meeting, so members can observe the sharing of new ideas and plans. All audience member comments will be deferred to the next full board meeting. This is what we do before then, so we can see what's coming up, make comments, and that's why it's a workshop, okay? So any comments you have, all of you, you'll be given an opportunity to provide comments at the beginning of that meeting. So, the full board meeting, which is August 15th. I assume you guys are coming then, that's why we're here tonight. So, for all interested parties, please come on August 15th. You'll be given an opportunity to comment at that time, due to the time constraints this evening, that's why we're starting a minute early, so we can get through this stuff. Tonight's work session will be followed by the regularly scheduled DRB panel meeting at 7:00. So we ask the audience for your cooperation and consideration for the panel applicants to move all additional conversations outside the meeting room, so we can proceed. So at 7:00, we turn into a pumpkin and disco, and so on. So this work session will be recorded and placed in the website's video library. So it is. All right, so why don't we go on and start? Oh, we got screen. Why don't you guys go on and start? Hello, Mark?
Hurry.
It's going out, looks good.
Informal words. You're going to shave by the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Ash.
So I appreciate the opportunity to sit down with you all. We actually are not scheduled for the August 15th meeting. We wanted to come in here and chat with you, but I wanted to turn it over to Michael and Eka to talk about, a little bit about the plans, but just big picture, describe what we've done since the last meeting. We had originally focused on a building that had 91 combination assisted living and more acute care units, and when I say acute care, it sort of starts with memory care and adds other elements into it. And based on the multiple conversations that we've had with the Design Review Board and the different opportunities to push and pull the building containing 91 units in it, we realized, obviously, having the last meeting, that 91 units in terms of the design of the building, we had worked with, wasn't going to cut it. And so what Kensington first did was go back and look at the business program that they had and the split between the assisted living and the more acute care beds associated with the project, and made a business decision to emphasize the acute care element of the building somewhat to the exclusion of the assisted living side of the house. It's broken up into two wings with the memory care and acute care on one side and the more traditional assisted living units on the other side, because there are general structure in terms of the way the guts of the building lay out on the inside. And so we were going to scale back the services provided inside the building in order to then scale back the size of the building. They made the decision to effectively downsize the number of, I'll call them, plain old assisted living beds within the building, and to then focus on the acute care, memory care side of the building as the place where they wanted to put the square footage and dedicate the square footage to the building. And so in terms of kind of the sacrifice of the building and what it means to the functionality, you still have functionality. In terms of the level of service is the same, all of the amenities are the same, all of the internal aspects of the building are the same for the residents who live there, but it just means we're going to serve fewer residents, and it's going to be on, it's going to have an emphasis on those residents who require more care than less care. So there's an element of the population that we just won't be able to serve as a result of the building. What that does to the building itself and what we've done is to take kind of the, I'll call it the non-direction direction that we got from the DRB the last time about whether we were chopping floors or whether we were chopping sides of buildings, meaning do we slice it vertically or horizontally? And made the decision to slice it vertically, to take a floor off of the building. We skinnied up the building and extended it closer to the property lines, I guess I'll call it north and south, but across the lines and then slide the building farther to the Sunrise Valley Drive side of the site in order to get it farther away from the units. The objective was to address the concerns from the folks in the townhouses to the rear about line of sight into their units, and to drop the building down to a point where we were either at or below the second story windows of the units on the back side. The effect is that we didn't have a single level parking structure beneath the building and then two levels of units above. Parking, as you'll recall, is buried in the hillside facing the townhouses, and then you have two stories of units above. So the kind of roof lines of the revised design are roughly the same as the roof lines on the townhouses, but the line of sight is actually slightly lower based on the grades. So, in a nutshell, it reduces the building size by about a third, it reduces the height by a complete floor, elongates it, pushes it closer to the Sunrise Valley Drive side in order to provide more distance. We gain kind of distance as well as a lower height. So with that, I'll let Michael add to what Mike explained, and then we can have Eka kind of walk me through the discussion.
Yeah, we come here a handful of times, and we came back, but the last time, it's what can we do? How can we make this work? And, for a lot of clear, we need the building, the box needs to be small. Can we do that? How small can it be? And is there a program that we can do, which is a deviation from our normal on business plan, to make this work? And we came up with this, so we dropped the building down to two stories, which took about 30% of the mass out of the building, which reduced the unit count to around 70 from 91, which is around 25%. Also, we were able to pull, like Mark said, pull the building away from the townhomes and back to the golf course an extra 20 feet, so it'd be to 100 feet. If you go to kind of the third, yeah, we cut two sections of the building, if you go back to one, two sections of the building, section one in the middle of the building, or parallel to the approach lane homes, and section two cuts the golf course and the nearest home. This gives a representation, the top one is section one, and not only did we line up the heights of the townhomes with the height of our building, given the fall foot drop, lined up where estimated windows would be. Here for the community members, that, you know, one of the concerns was that the top level of our building would look down into their bedroom windows. The new design basically shows that the top windows of our building are lower than the top windows of the townhomes. So in fact, they are higher, would be looking down. Section two, same thing, obviously, the grade change back there is a lot less than the grade change in the building's site, so the windows line of sight are basically equal if somebody were looking horizontally across. So that's to show the effect of the two-story building on the townhomes next door. I want to turn it over to Eka to talk about the architecture, what we went, what we did, what we went, the direction, how we believe it fits in, fits into the site, into the surroundings.
You know, we're looking at the buildings around the side, actually, the one that's pretty adjacent to it is the one that's sort of more restonian, like a little bit further away, it's all like common, like what you find anywhere else. We think that to fit it into the vocabulary of the townhouses is a bit out of place with this type of building, so we go back and take a look at some examples of certain arts and crafts and for example, architecture. So we relax on that one, and we think that by presenting it in a more natural look or tony kind of finishes, it would fit nicely into the vocabulary of the building around that Sunrise Valley Drive. When you walk or drive around there, you see a lot of ground, so we try to relax on to get a kind of power scheme. But of course, the design itself, the detail and everything can still be refined further.
Okay, that's the west side, that's the side away from the townhouses, right?
Right. This is the entrance, if you flip the exit.
So that side, you're seeing three stories, on the townhouse side, you're seeing two.
Right, yes. Good. This is from the townhouses.
Got it.
That's it, that's our short presentation, what we did.
We'll see in the office, that's fine.
Go back on the footage.
Good. I guess the, I mean, this is quite a substantial change. I wish I'd had more than two hours to look at it, because I actually saw it on Rested Now, I said, how's Rested Now have this, I haven't even seen it yet, but it's, you know, by the next time we see, we will have seen it more, but I think it's, you know, this is, all the things we've been saying, and I appreciate the effort you guys are making to, I mean, taking a whole floor off, reducing the building by almost 25%. The rear, I mean, the big, there's several areas, I'll just talk for myself, that I had problems with, and one was at the south end of your project, where it was so close to the townhouses. To even use your property, you have to do what you've done, and you've gotten about as far away as you can get without having a single loaded corridor, which doesn't make any sense economically for you guys. So it's, you know, I think that's an improvement. I think the, we've seen two floors from the townhouse side, that's the biggest change I see, and I think the distances are appropriate. I think the way you've notched in the building on that end, so it will appear even further away, I think that's a positive step. So I see a lot of things here, just when we get to start this discussion somewhere, so I'll start with that. And I think we get into the architecture, we're just looking at the building, the way it sits on the site. You literally pushed it as far away from the people next door as you can, you made it as skinny as you can, and it's, I mean, the little area in the back, behind your building, facing the townhouses in the back, it'd actually be a pretty pleasant little space, and I think you've gotten far enough away, and I would imagine there'll be some pretty serious landscaping going on back there, which we'll see on down the road here. And at the upper end, where the houses next door, the furthest away, also the grade is the most dramatic. Grade change is the most dramatic, so I think that's positive. But I'll hear what my other associates up here have to say, but you've got to start talking somewhere.
I just came in.
You've heard everything we heard. I mean, this is a workshop, it's not a meeting, right? So in that sense, so, I mean, any comments anybody has, whether Nick, you want to start and make some comments, what do you think, what do you see, what do you, you know, let's discuss what we're seeing here.
I think the encouraging things that I saw on these drawings today was moving the building towards Sunrise Valley Drive, I think I brought that up initially, that maybe not mirroring, but embodying what's going to happen across the street to a certain degree is a good idea in order to get the site away from the townhomes. I think the biggest change, though, that is more encouraging is getting that section where section two goes through the portion of the golf course, getting that away from the townhomes. You know, I encourage you guys, I think you mentioned landscaping is going to be key here, I was looking at street view photos and photos from the last presentation you guys had, to really kind of get screening installed, and maybe work with the townhomes to come up with a plan to plant on their property and your property to really create a, you know, year-round visual buffer there. I think that's probably the biggest thing that these drawings have conveyed, but I know it could happen on here to help that out. The outdoor patio on the back side of the building, that's the only outdoor recreation space or outdoor area that you guys have, is that?
This, this one.
Tables and chairs out there?
There will be, there will be some, but it will be more soft.
Okay. At the ground level.
Yes.
Okay. How is it after now? Do you guys have to go upon that?
Bruce, I was encouraged by the, what's it, the reduction in height and the distance compared from the townhomes in the beginning, and I think that we got getting to the architecture of the morning, because I know there was concerns in that area as well as the basic sightlines. But to me, this is going in several steps in the direction that we were talking about, so encouraged as well.
Neil?
I like the way the footprint feels more commensurate with the townhomes, and probably the center, if you don't mind looking at that on here. The scale feels much more appropriate, much more commensurate. I think you've got a building that you can play with, as you started to do, with these gables and dormers, and, you know, you further reduce the mass on the two-story side by suppressing the beam line. And I think it's, you know, I'll venture into an architectural comment, it's a little too Adder-on-Dats for me, for my taste, a little Disneylandish, almost themed, almost a little too great, great state of Wyoming, perhaps. But the scale's there to do whatever you want, and I think that's going to be fun to develop, because, you know, what is, what is the right language is very subjective. I think you've got the pieces in the right places, and the scale's good.
Ken?
Yeah, I concur with my colleagues here. You have taken the class of ship down two classes, using my word, so, well done, I do, I am very encouraged, as my colleagues are on that. So with regard to the massing, I think you guys have come a long way. I think you've adjusted the footprint as best you can, I think you moved it as far away as you conceivably can without going into the driveway somehow. I think you've taken into account the townhouses as best you can, I suspect we'll fiddle around with it a little bit. So overall, I'm very impressed with that. I have to agree with Neil and a few others, architecturally, I would probably say this is a little bit, I think it reminds me of arts and crafts, and I think it might have been mentioned. I don't see that in Rested, I see that in Rockton, I see it inherently, but I don't see it in Rested, but, you know, that's really my only issue, which is, so from my perspective, I'm happy that we're getting to that place, where we can start playing with your parents' tis for next time. I would only emphasize the back, I think you've done a great job moving the footprint significantly. I think landscaping back there would come in really handy, and I think everybody would appreciate that, including your residents, so. So I'll be curious what the landscaping will look like in the future, but I suspect you'll hit there, too.
Let me ask you a question on the architecture. Probably with every iteration, we come in with a different iteration of architecture. We started with, you know, very traditional cable residential look, went to a more contemporary look, we now have landed at arts and crafts, short of, you know, space technology, what should we be, you know, what should we be looking at? Because obviously, the placement of windows and other stuff has ripple effects, and roof lines have ripple effects, and I don't know that we've ever gotten a true sense as to of the myriad choices we presented, which ones you guys actually thought were headed in the right direction? Because I don't know that there was unanimity on the board, frankly, as to which direction one was to head on that.
Yeah, I think a couple of things, more general comments, that we have been known to disagree on this board, every now and then. But I think the thing I see with what you're doing here is this is looking, in my mind, way more residential, which I think is the most positive thing. It's a scale and a massing, I don't mind the ski chalet thing as much, because it's kind of, you know, new architecture's going to come to Rested at some point, it's not all going to look like it was designed in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, and I think.
It's kind of 1870s.
For me, 1810s, back when I first started practicing. But I think that, you know, the things that you kind of look at here, and this, you get into it, we'll pay more attention to this, but it looks like you've spent on the, I'm looking at the east elevation. That's the west, can we go to east, so you can? Houston, and I appreciate this, you've spent more time working on the left side of the elevation at this point, so it relates better to the, those look like townhouses, I mean, that all fits together with the houses. And then the right side, which actually projects some 30 feet closer, needs to, in my mind, be as fussy as the left side, so it breaks it up more. And it's more of just a flat facade with a couple little bumps, but I think as you develop this, the more indentations or the little shed roofs you have coming out on the left side that break the mass visually and all this kind of stuff, I think that will come with time. And I think the right side doesn't have the same level of detail the left side does, but that's just a question of messing around with it until you get it together. The, but the whole residential poly, I guess, that, and welcome, there's some new architecture here. I mean, I believe one of the people that spoke at one of our meetings talked about wanting to see things that were more contemporary. Well, that happens, at the same time, a lot of residential stuff is happening now, is more arts and crafts, a lot of houses are doing now all arts and crafts, and I don't think that's a bad thing, I think it adds a lot of character, it adds all by itself scale, interesting materials, interesting fenestration patterns, all the stuff that you can do when you do that, it doesn't look like an institution, where the very first one you came in with looked like a bank in Williamsburg at this four-story side, it was a great building, but didn't fit here. It's totally starting with the light fitting, you know, because it's way more residential and not nearly as institutional, and I think that's what I've been looking for, and dropping, losing a whole level helps you do that. So I think this is pretty positive, but like I said, look at the right-hand side of that, see if it can match the left-hand side, so there's more consistency from one side to the other, and then as the right-hand side is coming more at you, if that could become as interesting as the left-hand side. And the style is really, this is beginning to fit there. I'm not going to tell you it needs to be arts and crafts, or it needs to be Williamsburg, or it needs to be whatever, this just seems to be fitting better, in my mind. It's way more residential, and I think that's one of the things I've been looking for, something that fits in your driveway, you might not realize is more institutional, just looks like a chain of townhouses, you know, that's where I see you getting there.
I think your architect was very capable of pulling something together on this. I think it's, I think you've, the thing I would start to wonder about a little bit is, I mean, it gets back to this building type, this sprawling long building type, when it looked sort of like, you know, admittedly disparaging, I guess, what we were using, a bit looking more like a Marriott or a Days Inn or whatever, you know, pick a level of chain you were at. Now it's a sprawling lodge, and, you know, that's much more residential, as Richard was saying, you know, maybe it's just down to some of the fretwork in the gables that pushes it over the edge, I mean, I don't know. Don't have a vision exactly for what I expect. It's nice when there get to be some local moments of composition within this very long facade, and I can't quite find enough of those local moments where you find a really beautiful section of the building that's got its own composition, where there's so many little dormers, and how do you decide when to pair them, and how do you decide when to individually do them? You know, so I mean, all of that's just refinement of an architect is going to do, hopefully. You know, I think there need to be moments that slow you down as you go along this long long facade and bring some composition to it. But again, I think the, repeating myself, but I think the scale is there, allows you to have fun with it now, it's not nearly so hard to work with. So, you know, when the owner let go of some of that proverb, it made your job a lot easier as an architect.
Just for the record, I have no idea what you just.
That's why I do what I do, and that's why you do what you do. Mostly part of it, mostly part of you, the mostly people here.
The translator doesn't understand.
I might add on to what Richard and Neil said, I'd say of all the wanderings so far, this one I liked the best, so that tells you where we've gone, where we're at at this one, is the one I would choose.
You have to break it down.
Yeah.
And you've done that, you've broken it down a lot. I wouldn't want you to go back in the other direction, based on anything that I've said that Mark doesn't understand.
I think a picture's worth a thousand words, if you kind of look at these two, this is where I started, this is where you are now. I'm sorry, these are so small, but I think that's, that's a huge difference, and that's what we've been pushing for, and why I'm encouraged by where you guys are going, you know, that this is, what else can I say? That's a huge difference. Or you can throw this one out there, you know, this is, I mean, you guys have really been working at this, and it's, I can hold these up for the next 30 minutes and then get out of here. There, you know, this is, I look at this, this is, this system working, and I appreciate the effort you guys are going through to get here. It's not perfect yet, but it's really, in my mind, getting closer to something that I don't think will have a huge adverse impact on the neighbors, which is one thing we're kind of looking for, and that have to be something we all be proud of. Comments from the far, far west?
I have one question, in addition to what I mentioned earlier, that the trail is on the left side of the building, I'm not complaining to you. Is that the one, I guess, the residents were concerned with, that wasn't shown before, but, you know, you guys are emphasizing that, make sure that they can see what you can do. And then on the golf course side, is there going to be netting there, or?
Yes.
How they were right up to the property line?
Are you all closer there? Little bit, maybe that step up on telephone poles, like netting or whatever, there's some, yeah, what was there behind the?
You know, to the extent that those end elevations are much smaller to deal with, and you compare it to some of our townhouse discussions from last week, your end elevations are nice compositions, they're, they're.
A bit small.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that's it, maybe that informs a little bit about how you break down the rest of it, but, yeah, the south elevation's just a jewel, nice.
Bruce?
It's funny to me how star wars, we see a little bit of difference. I saw it as the ski lodges, but I think that's something, that's the next step I'll be moving that.
Well, if we, I mean, just general comments, do we, how do we feel about the footprint? Have they gotten to where, are there any other tweaks we think they should make, so we can give them more direction, so that they do come back, we have some idea of what everyone's taking away from this meeting? And is, are there further tweaks, or are there other things that we think could happen? I mean, I don't know, generally, I mean, we're.
I like, I'm going back to that south elevation for a second. The part that projects that you put the gables on is a size that's commensurate to the individual townhouses, and when we look at the long elevation that were in plan, how the jigs and jogs in plan along that con. jogs and plan along that common property line elevation, you know, I think you'd like, I think, I think it's a good thing, a good dimension to play with for how you break that facade up, the way the south elevation did. And, you know, when the corner picks its big turn here, and you, you know, you use that same proportion, I think, I think how you turn the corners and how you use that piece will make it relate more and more to the townhouses and, and break some of that south elevation composition to the long facades. And, you know, it doesn't have a whole lot of dormer stuff going on, it's just nice tables and...
Yeah, it's done sometimes, you think it's just...
Exactly, just a tad bit of...
I just think of the, I mean, the little bit that we read at the beginning, there are no minutes being taken and so on, and we were deferring comments from affected parties and so on. But I think, I mean, I've only had this to look at for like the two hours before we came here tonight. I don't know, you, everyone out there, had a chance to see this, not see this, first time you've seen it? Are there any, I would be happy if anyone out there had comments they'd like to make about what you just saw, or any of our discussions that we've had so far. We still got 20 some minutes before, yeah, I mean, that's before he has...
Hi, I'm Taya Crinick. This is my first meeting I've been to, but I haven't following it unless my neighbor's preparing the torch for me. I am at 2025 Approach Lane, which is very near where the line for section one goes. I'm Cleveland's neighbor. My concern is if you go to the elevation one, and I realize that you guys have, the one that shows the lines across that line.
Good. Two long sections.
Long section. There you go. So while I do note that the elevation has dropped, I'm so concerned that the person on the second story of the new building, looking down into the first floor of our building, they don't see that line being drawn there. And then conversely, I'm the person on the left-hand side of that drawing, what I'm looking at now is just the building, so all of my view of Reston, Reston is blocked off from that, by that building. So that remains my concern. The other I want to note is, if you all haven't had a chance to come look at our townhouses, the windows that we have on our side are sliding by our doors, so it's a big opening. So it provides a lot of opportunity for people to look in. And since that's our only, our only source of natural light coming through the front of our, our houses, I hate to have to keep it closed the entire time to maintain our presence, so, thank you very much.
Anyone else have comments?
My comment is, I was just surprised we even got this far. That area is, to me, should, should be used for the surrounding community across the street. We're going to have a lot of young people moving into those rentals. Up the street, we're going to have a lot of young people moving into that rental. This, this product is high-end, which I feel are going to probably come from Great Falls, Falls Church, Loudoun County. I don't see many Restonians moving into it. I pulled up nursing homes near Reston. Do you know there are 44? And in Reston alone, there's 39, and then goes down to the 12th best. Why do we need another nursing home? That should be like a bakery shop, a beauty salon, a boutique, something that all the community can go, those people cross the street, walk over and use. Why are we even entertaining this? That's my concern. This board is known as the essential elements of Reston. You're to protect it. I don't think this is something that's protecting our area. This needs to be out on Route 7, Hunter's Woods, because people coming to this building are going to come in from Great Falls, they're going to drive down to Loudoun County. That, those people that can afford to be in this building aren't going to get out of their Mercedes, get on Metro, and come see this building. They're not going to do it. So what is this about? It's not protecting us. That should be a small little community over there that these people coming in across from us can use. No one's going to use this. We're blocked out. And then now, our property values are going down because we're looking at the back of the building. I'm angry. I'm sorry, but I'm very angry that we even got this far.
Thank you. Any others?
Yes?
Stephen Cherry, I'm the HOA president, and, you know, I've addressed you before on this. Just a couple of quick things, because I think we all need to digest this. We did, I did save this story on Reston Mall, this effort. So just my own personal view is, you know, really echoed by a lot of what I heard here tonight, particularly from Richard and some of the others, that it's definitely moving in the right direction. We may not be quite there yet, and obviously, we'll have to see what my neighbors have to say about it. But just speaking about the architecture, so I'll just stick there at one topic. Unfortunately, I missed the last meeting, so I can see the contemporary version of this, and of course, many of us have been urging a more contemporary design. With regard to this design, I think it's moving in the right direction. It may not be quite right, maybe too much of a ski chalet, or maybe a very upscale hotel near, near the interstate. But I think it's something that can be worked with. And what I would ask is, I don't know if that roof line could be brought down a little bit lower, but what I would ask is that you look to make this a little more, move it back in a little more contemporary direction, or at least this sort of California contemporary style that Weathersfield, you know, that I think describes the Weathersfield cluster, not necessarily, and maybe just really a matter of sort of tweaking some of the exterior elements. It's moving a little bit, so it's a little bit more complimentary to what's up at the top of the hill. But personally, I, I think it is an improvement, and I think we're moving in the right direction. But here again, I'm speaking for myself, not my neighbors.
Okay, thanks. Neil, in the back.
I, I'm, our property is at 2045 Approach, which is that second house in Alphard. Just a comment in general, there's been a lot of talk of improved massing tonight, and the point I would like to make is that it's a bit disingenuous to show the roof line of the existing school, as the section one, section two, one that Taya asked you guys to bring up, when what you guys have never seen is them impose the footprint of the current school from the sky looking down, as compared to what the footprint of the building they're proposing is. That's our point of reference, as the community sitting next to it. So to us, this is smaller, but it's not improved to us, because that is our point of reference, because that's what we've been living next to for five, 10, 15, 20, 30 years, minimum. So I would ask you guys to keep that in mind, that our point of reference as for massing is, you know, if you're going to show the elevation of the school and say, oh, the elevation's better, you also need to show it from the sky down, because you're not telling the whole story. And I don't think it gives you guys on board the whole story and the whole view as we would see it living next to it.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Joe Leighton, and I think some of you might know me, I know Ken Chappell knows me anyway. But anyway, I was pressing on my question for 12 years, but the thing that this drawing doesn't really tell me what the open space is, what the parking is, and also, you know, like I said before, you need to make sure that they have enough, you know, parking spaces complied with the current county regulations. And also, I'm not sure whether this is private property or part of the convenience, and if it's part of the convenience, then they would need to have, you know, accessible parking places, handicap parking spaces. And handicap parking spaces take up more space than regular parking spaces. So I think we need, you know, see, see a drawing, at least I might see a drawing that shows, you know, the parking spaces and everything, because this thing doesn't really, I'm not an architect, I don't really know, you know, try to authenticate the parking spaces at all.
Okay. All right, we'll make sure that when, when they come back to the, to the full board, whenever, September, wherever you're going to come back. I mean, part of what we're trying to do tonight is to get these questions out there, so when they, we can have a full discussion, parking spaces is one of them. I would suspect that in order to get permits, you're going to have to meet the parking space requirements and so on and so forth. A lot of the previous examples, we did have to respond to that, our aerial views of what's there, what's coming and so on, and some of the other versions of stuff we've gotten over the months or whatever it's been. So we've been trying to take a pretty good overview of what's going on as best we can in this thing, sort of getting moved around and so on, so. Okay, back to just the board now. Does the board have any other questions or comments, or I think we've given you guys some things to think about in terms of what we're saying? If we don't have, we could use the whole hour if we don't need to. So...
Can I add a?
As long as it's nice and sweet.
I'm Jamie Anthony, I'm an original resident at Weathersfield. I saw the town grow up all under. This clearly is an improvement, I don't know what was, but I really need to echo what was said about, there's so much growth, there's so much density that's happening, that we really need services for the folks, walkable services for the folks who are here, whether it's a restaurant, whether it's a convenience store, something that just kind of adds to us rather than imparts people. And this is something even, I have a profoundly handicapped son. When you get into this level of care, these folks aren't going anywhere, they're just there, and people are coming in and coming out, and there'll be merchants and vehicles and medical and whatever. And I just think you're building awful lot of stuff right around this that is begging for some walkable, I don't want to say 7-Eleven, but something that you can go and get carted and help, that you can go get something like that. And it's, so I think they did a great job downsizing it, but I think it was very smart to concentrate on just one, one part of the population. We do have a lot of incoming services coming in.
All right, thanks. Anyone else have any comments or direction you can give the app to?
Did you hear enough? I think we, I think we've heard enough in terms of kind of the, the site plan and the massing, so the architecture will, we got full, the lead person in my position didn't understand everything, so as long as I can understand it, I think we're okay.
Yeah. I think the style is kind of, you know, up to you, and one comment that I made that I think this is more residential, we've gotten away from institutional. I think that's, that's a message I would keep pushing out there, that that's, it's in a residential, well, it's got commercial on one side, but the other side's residential, so the more residential this looks, I think the happier, the better it's going to blend in and so on. So I think those were some comments you heard.
If you have a landscape plan for the next meeting, I think that'd be good, not, here's what we're planting, something conceptual, to really show that you're thinking of screen or whatever the ultimate intent there, whatever it's, yeah, plan to you, providing a PRC plan for some issue of the county, it's associated, this might be helpful to help tell the story a little better, from my perspective.
You bring up a good point, which is, while we've been having these discussions with the design review board, we have not been having any discussions with the county. So the two-headed monster that is getting approval in Reston, we still need to socialize this with the county. And so I can't foresee what exactly they're going to say, so I can't guarantee that we're not going to come back here and say we need to do X, Y, and Z as a response to the county. But hopefully, hopefully they will, they will buy into the direction that we've took tonight and carry forward, so I just want to plant that seed for you.
Bruce? Neil? All right, thank you all for coming here. Thank you all for coming out there, and you will be notified when they're coming back. If you got the center or something, probably.